A bit over. Is there a motion to go back into open session? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn the previous meeting? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now we are ready to begin our regular meeting if we could start the introductory video. I'd like to, I'd like to call the August 16th, 2022 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'd like to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board of Commissioners at this meeting, this meeting tonight. All right, we come to the consent agenda. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Do any members of the public have any questions about any items that are on our consent agenda? All right. If not, could we have a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of our agenda as identified on the website? All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, great. So we have a couple of presentations this evening. The first one is an update on the Strategic Partnership Grants Committee, and Rachel Nygaard, the Strategic Partnerships Director, is going to present this item. Yes, we are. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Joyner. Public comment. Okay, my apologies. I'm jumping ahead. We did have a sign up sheet for folks who would like to speak during public comment. I believe one person, Stephanie, may have signed up. Is Stephanie here? Okay, great. And if anybody else would like to speak during public comment, you will be invited to do that as well. But Stephanie, come on up and let me just remind us of our policies. The time limit for public comment is three minutes. There'll be an orange light that'll come on when you have about 30 seconds left, and a red light that'll come on when your time's up, and we do ask that. Folks, discontinue their public comment once your time's up because we want to give everyone the same amount of time. But thank you for being with us.
Thank you for your service. When do I start?
You may, you may start. Yes, go ahead.
On September 12th, 2001, under duress, my father sold 16-plus acres of his mountain top farm to federal government under false pretense to benefit hikers of the Appalachian Trail at the National Forest Office here in Asheville. Real motive appears to be building Interstate 26 in Madison County, build a dam, and a large deep creek lake reservoir for future land development. A bait-and-switch easement turned into a forced sale, if not signed by the end of the meeting, threatened with imminent demain. I was told by Justice Department officials to sign for my mother. I refused. Last summer, as current landowner, I filed for the government to honor their original verbal agreement of easement. My family also suggested a shelter and water spigot for hikers. A summary judgment was requested. No response was in court filed by deadline. Their late response was to move the case to their federal court to judge themselves. I wrote a letter stating conflict of interest. I was told over the phone by their office the case was closed. This appears to be engineered by my father's adversaries from the Central Intelligence Agency using national security classification. Yesterday, I went to that courthouse asking for paperwork to file criminal charges of racketeering against the CIA. I was told it wasn't available and redirected to a different location. A new deed was not generated after that land sale. Madison County insists will service deeds. Buncombe and Madison are not definitive on uniformity of vital records in the state of North Carolina, and federal marshals and Madison County sheriffs don't recognize or respond to discharging hunting equipment after dark as against ATF federal law. There are at least two other locations a dam could be placed, which could provide for moderate development, modest development in Madison, and support Buncombe County due to their overdevelopment. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak during the public comment period? Okay, great. All right, now we come to, we have two presentations on the agenda. The first is the Strategic Partnership Grants Committee. Again, Rachel Nygaard is here to present this, this item.
Good evening, Commissioners. Rachel Nygaard here. I lead the Strategic Partnerships Office for Buncombe County, and I'm in fact not your presenter this evening. The slide in front of you lists three presenters from the Strategic Partnership Grant Committee, but due to illness and health, we have one person here, and we're glad to be represented this evening by Annie Carpenter, who's going to take us through the material. This is the annual scheduled update from this standing committee, which is responsible for making recommendations around strategic partnership grant funding. So I will pass now to Annie when you're ready to advance slides.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, and thank you all for this opportunity to present the work of our committee. We are the Strategic Partnership Grant Committee. I am Annie Carpenter, and I regret that Kim and Doug cannot be with me tonight, but I've got Rachel nearby should I need her. Just as a review, this committee's purpose is to make strategic partnership grant investment to nonprofit organizations in the community that are in alignment with the Board goals and present those recommendations to you all. We were formed as a committee in 2020, and we are in process of our third year of grant making. This is just a list of the nine committee membership. And as mentioned, Doug Clark, our chair, was intending to be here tonight. And we have had a couple of new folks join this year, but in general, we have a pretty solid representation of, of membership renewal. Brief review of our grant cycle is that staff does a great job of putting out an RFP and helping applicants through the process in December through February. As a committee, we review all of the requests and prepare recommendations in spring and finalize grant awards with your approval in June. The grant period begins in July, and throughout the year, staff along with activities from the committee monitor and support the applicants or the grantee awardees as well as work on process improvements for our own committee work. Within the past year, we have done all of the activities of that cycle. I will call out that last August, we also held an ad hoc group session from among our committee members to review our own process and the application materials prior to the next cycle through an equity lens. And we also conducted, just recently in June, another process improvement discussion about the, the application process and award process as we do incorporate continual improvement into our, our committee work. The eligibility for grantees to apply essentially involves being an active, a nonprofit and active operation for at least two years and that they meet one of the four pillars that align with county strategic plan in the areas of education, environment, well-being, and economy. We limit funding to three years per single project and request that, ask that the, the applications do not represent more than 30% of the organization's annual operating budget. This year, in the 2023 cycle, we, we had about 2.6 million in requests, which represented 66 projects from 63 nonprofits. In a feat of miracle, we were able to, to land on 30 projects. I'm sorry, we were able to, we had 30 of those projects were renewal applications, and 36 were new to the committee for review first time. We do use a scoring rubric based on the need for the project to, to meet a need of the community, the project plan, its proposed results, as well as how it incorporates equity into the work of the organization and the project, and then the organizational capacity, the likelihood that the, the organization will be successful in meeting the goals of the, the project. So in 2023, we did award a total of $900,000 in these four pillars. And this is a breakdown of the awarded projects. And I believe in your packets, you also have an addendum which lists every grantee who received funds for this cycle. You can see that we were fairly well distributed across each pillar, although there certainly were a lot of projects requested in the health and well-being category, and that will represent the largest amount of, of funding for this cycle. Thanks to some further inquiry about the, about our process and the impact of our, our work in terms of what organizations are funded through our process. Staff did a great job of providing a little bit more detailed information that you have there about what type of specific projects are funded within each category. They, I believe, because there were fewer environmental requests, for example, that is not further broken down, but in some of the other categories, you can see the span of, of types of education, for example, or the things that fell into the category of health and well-being that we are funding through this grant process. Additionally, some questions that we had about, about process and about impact of the grant making, staff was able to provide a bit more detail on the geographic distribution of grant, of nonprofits that were awarded by district. So this is a helpful starting place for us to better review how we are meeting the needs across the counties and intend to, to look at this as well as other data points to improve our process going forward.
I have a question, if you mind, just while you're, on that map. So the map reflects the location of where the organization's office is located or where they receive mail, but it doesn't necessarily reflect like this geographic scope of the people they serve in the community. Is that correct?
That is correct, and we did discuss that. And we have talked about ways to improve the application to consider where services are provided by that organization because many of the, many of the organizations whose projects we review will have sites across the county where they're reaching their targeted participants or beneficiaries. And so that is on our radar to get a little bit better geographic scope of where the impact is. A couple of highlights from this year for our committee, or just about our committee, is that we are always amazed by, as I'm sure you will agree, the strength and resilience of our nonprofits in this community, especially during COVID. We were still in kind of an up and down year last year, and they were able to deliver on some great work. The diversity of projects that we have supported and that, that we got to review and learn about in this community is just a huge testimony to the amount of good work being done by people every day to make lives better for our neighbors. And, and our committee actually has, even though we are only just now coming back to in-person meetings, we have a cohesive group of very honest and thoughtful individuals who, who take part in this process. So I'm very pleased to be part of it. We try to be inclusive and collaborative and intentional and all of the things you see here. The support from our, from our staff who leads our committee is incredible, and we always hear great things during our site visits about the, from the nonprofits about the support they get from this department. So all around, I am, am so pleased with how it's going, and that's why I continue to sign up to be part of it. Next steps is that we are, the staff is working with the grantees on funding agreements for the beginning of this year, and then their performance reports will be published online on the county's website quarterly. And we are in the midst of scheduling our site visits to hopefully go out and see some of the work in action. And then we'll begin planning for the next grant cycle, incorporating the improvement ideas that we, we came up with as a part of our process review. Some of these things include the addition of a possible soft cap on request amounts so that we do not find ourselves in a situation where a single, perhaps very valuable and merited grant takes the largest bulk of the funds available. So kind of level-setting expectations of the nonprofits about what the range may be. We have discussed that, as well as expanding the results section on the application to more clearly capture the impact for renewal applications, better assessing geographic impact, which we've talked about, as well as some possible weighted scoring to prioritize project budgets and the project plan, which is currently reviewed under organizational capacity at this time. And here we are at the end. Thank you very much for your time. We are open to, always open to feedback, and I appreciate the strong work of Rachel and team and for all of you for supporting this work.
All right, thanks, Annie. Commissioners, any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you all, to each of you for serving on this particular committee and the time that you have invested to thoroughly reading a myriad of grant applications. I know that is no easy feat, and I'm sure you probably feel a little better educated about what's happening in our community after reading those. So thank you all so much for that. Please pass that on to the other members who aren't here this evening. I do want to note that this is the world in which I work, outside of being a Buncombe County Commissioner, and the feedback that I hear from my peers in nonprofits and professional fundraising is always incredibly positive, even from the organizations who haven't been awarded the grants because they understand now why they didn't receive the funding and what they can do to improve their application for a future grant process. And they also really appreciate the transparency in having the open meetings that they can watch, they can tune into, and just really wanted to pass that along. Also appreciate the time limit that has been instituted. We know grants aren't meant to be forever funding, so going into a process knowing exactly how long you may potentially receive funding, I think is also a benefit to, to the applicants. I do want to say, wearing both community hats, I presented to the Association of Fundraising Professionals. I think Rachel and Avril were both aware of that, kind of what it's like to be a professional fundraiser and a commissioner. And we talked a lot about this particular process, and there were representatives from across the region who then reached out separately and said, oh, my gosh, could you please ask our Board of Commissioners to adopt a process like this or to even begin funding nonprofits at all? So I want to commend you all and Rachel and Avril for being willing to look at this, that just as, you know, anecdotal stories that I hear are really, really positive. And also knowing that there's other commissions across the state who have taken a look at the way that we do this and are adopting it as well. So that's pretty exciting to be a leader on. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you. We'll pass it on.
And I'll share some feedback, and I do have a few questions, too, so yes, again. And it may be Rachel, but, but definitely thank you because this is, this is a very large amount of funding that we're investing in the community. And us having gone through just doing this with our ARPA funds, we're well aware of these really tough decisions that this committee is being faced with making and with that, so thank you. And it looks like from some of what you shared, you're doing some really good reflection, and it's always important to be improving that process, so I appreciate that. One, some of the feedback that I've heard, which certainly is very positive, but one thing, just from the, looking at the rubric, the feedback I've heard, it'd be very useful if you state on the application and on the rubric what you, what specifically the county definition of equity is, because that's stated in our strategic plan. So that way, everybody knows what we mean by equity because you can see by the feedback we're getting on the comp plan, you ask 10 people, and people have various definitions. So that way, everybody has that same understanding. So that was one of the things. And, excuse me. I definitely think maybe what you're looking at with the project weighting sounds like a good idea with looking at that. And the, the geographic representation was one thing certainly I've looked at. I think because of the way our districts are, it doesn't necessarily, if you just look at the districts, you're not necessarily looking at that overall geographic dispersion. So I do think to Chair Newman's point earlier, you know, being able to look at, okay, where's the impact of this grant going to take place? And is that really a reflection? Are we actually touching all of our county or the majority of our county rather than just specific locations? And I think that's really important to look at that going forward. But thank you so much, and thanks for being here to present to us.
Thank you. Thanks for that feedback, and we'll share it with the committee. Appreciate your time.
All right, I have a question, too. The question is, does the Strategic Partnership Committee receive information about, you know, the county has a number of different funds to invest in different public purposes, right? So, you know, we have like, we invest in early childhood education and pre-K, affordable housing. We've got some land conservation projects, and then we have like tipping point grants. Some of these, you know, I mean, considering the broad mission that the Strategic Partnership Group has given, could have, could have a lot of overlap with other, you know, funding mechanisms we have. So does the committee receive information about here's what the other organizations in, that are being funded through those other funds have been? Or if there are applications pending? You know, some of these groups are, of course, very resourceful in terms of seeking all possible funding avenues they could. And in some cases, they might even submit identical proposals to different funding mechanisms. So just a question about, do, do y'all receive information about that? Just to be aware of what else the county may be doing to support those initiatives?
Yes. We, in past cycles, have had a question specifically about other county funding that was received. But we also have the budgets that request pending and secured funding streams. So we can view that in that, in, in that way. We have also talked about what, you know, what are the expectations on our committee for any type of recommendation or addition to the rubric or how it would affect scoring to know that an organization has received multiple sources or not? Like, we have not put any type of limit on that, but it is part of the overall view of someone, of an organization's diverse revenue stream and whether they are utilizing, you know, philanthropy as well as fundraising as well as, you know, state and federal funds, et cetera. So to, to answer your question, I do, I'll look to Rachel to see if we change that question in future years or if we still have the other county funds. Yes, I will defer to the experts.
So there is not a limit. Organizations may submit proposals to multiple grant, grant processes within the county, but they need to be separate projects. So if there's a large organization that works in the field of affordable housing and early care and education, they would be able to apply separately. If they have the same project, they would need to select the best fit and only, only apply to one grant program. And we, we do make that information available just as Annie was describing, as insight into the budget and organizational operations. But we, for the grant purposes, compartmentalize at the project level.
I think that makes sense. I mean, if there is a, and there's a lot of information to look at here. If there is a way for just folks to be aware of they are receiving funding for other programs, even if they are distinct, I mean, I just think that's an interesting data point to be aware of. So just feedback. Any other questions?
I agree with that because I think some of them are, actually, we have contracts with some of those organizations as well. So beyond the other grants, some of them, we are receiving other funding from us as well. So I think it's an important thing to be aware of.
All right. Hey, thank you for serving. Appreciate it. All right, thanks, Rachel. I think we're good now, finally. All right. All right, next up, we're going to hear a presentation from some of our frontline healthcare workers in Buncombe County who work at, who are nurses working at Mission Hospital. And so Lori Hedrick is here, and I know I can see a number of her colleagues are with her as well. We appreciate the work that you all do for our community. As you all know better than anybody, the past several years have been uniquely challenging for our community and for our country from a public health standpoint. So we just wanted to have a chance to acknowledge your important work in Buncombe County in Western North Carolina and, and have a chance to hear from you about how you see things working as the community goes through the recovery process from the pandemic and changes that have happened at Mission Hospital. So thank you for being here this evening. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me. Good evening, Commissioners in Western North Carolina. Very appreciative of the opportunity to speak to you about the Nurses Union at Mission Hospital. I want to start by saying how much we appreciate the strong community support we have received throughout the two years we've been forming this union with National Nurses United. I, again, my name is Lori Hedrick. I work in the inpatient wound care department. My team sees patients all over the hospital, so we have the opportunity to see how each unit is functioning on a daily basis. On September 17th, 2020, the nurses voted to unionize in an astounding landslide victory. The reason we became nurses was because we have a deep desire to help people through their illnesses and injuries, to provide care and compassion when people most need it. It has been devastating for all of us, who have been at Mission for years, to slowly lose the ability to provide excellent care to these patients. As most of you know, the biggest changes occurred when HCA purchased Mission Hospital in 2019. The nurses collectively bargained and signed a contract with HCA's Mission Hospital based in Asheville a little over a year ago. The contract covers multiple issues related to patient safety and nursing safety inequality. However, a contract does not automatically lead HCA to fully complying with the requirement set forth. Those of us who are considered leaders in the union continuously educate our colleagues on how we, the nurses, have to consistently enforce the contract. HCA does not educate management on what is in this contract. Therefore, it is the duty of every nurse to make sure it is not being violated on a daily basis. In a state that has one of the lowest percentage of unions in the country, we do encounter a knowledge deficit of how, of how a successful union works. That being said, as our union grows, we are finding more we are finding more and more that nurses are willing to continue to fight for what is right for their patients and themselves. One of the greatest tools we have as a union is the ability to file grievances with HCA when the contract is violated. A grievance can often be resolved informally by the nurse notifying their manager of the failure to follow the contract. If the grievance is not resolved with this informal request, it moves on to the first step of the grievance process. There are four steps in this process. Few grievances have had to go through all of the steps. That is, thanks to our union nurse leaders and our NNU representatives' ability to successfully resolve the grievances prior to reaching the final step, the final step being arbitration. These are just a few examples of grievances that we've won so far. Suspension of employees without just cause. Nurses not receiving their raises based on years of experience. Nurses having to use their paid time off in place of quarantine pay, which violated the emergency temporary standard set forth by OSHA. Denial of filling a vacancy by a nurse in her own department that was filled by a newly hired nurse instead. Denial of tuition reimbursement. Noncompliance with the requirement of posting of schedules. All of these situations were resolved due to the persistence and strength shown by the nurses willing to stand up for what they deserve. We filed many other grievances that are very, that are at various steps in the process. Unfortunately, we expect to continue the contract to be violated. Another huge change for us has been the instilment of just cause, where the employee shall be disciplined or discharged only with just cause. This includes the requirement of an investigatory meeting prior to a meeting that involves disciplinary action. The Nurses allowed the presence of a nursing union representative, known as a Weingarten rep, to accompany the nurse to this meeting. This ensures proper steps are taken to a written disciplinary action. There are certain steps that have to be followed when disciplining a nurse, which were not followed prior to unionization. This has completely changed the dynamic in these meetings and has given nurses much more control when being called in for any type of discipline. Another great success we have with the union, per the contract, is the formation of the Professional Practice Committee, which is composed of registered nurses from the bargaining unit. We submit recommendations to the chief nursing officer on a monthly basis. The objectives are to improve patient care and workplace safety based on our daily hands-on experience. We have had many successes with these recommendations. We also establish the Nursing Staffing Committee to review the staffing standards and guidelines. This committee consists of three RNs and three hospital-designated members of management. Unfortunately, the Nurses, the union Nurses face many obstacles in these meetings. They were able to get better nurse-to-patient ratios approved for all of the ICUs. And they were able to, they were able to push management to allow nurses to volunteer to come in on extra shifts as helping, helping hands to provide meal and rest breaks. But that has proved to be a challenge to maintain because we're so understaffed. The Nurses in the bargaining unit are now in a position that was not possible before unionizing. The fact that management is required to sit down and discuss issues with us gives us much more visibility and control. So I would also like to talk about the ways HCA continues to fail nurses and all other employees at Mission. The major problem is still inadequate staffing, not of nurses and essential adjunct staff. We are down more than 400 core nurses, Mission Nurses, compared to this time last year. Leadership hears our pleas on a regular basis via the staffing committee, along with the assignment despite objective forms that are filled out and signed daily by nurses who are accepting unsafe assignments. The unsafe assignments are due to inadequate staffing. Inadequate staffing leads to nurses routinely missing their meal and rest breaks. Not only are they missing their unpaid meal breaks, they are automatically docked 30 minutes of pay each shift because they are assumed to be taking these breaks. The nurse has put, has to put in a time edit every time they miss a meal break in order to prevent the stocking of pay. And they often don't have time to do this. When we formed the union, our expectation was to be compensated fairly in order to retain experienced nurses. The contract negotiating team unfortunately had to agree to less than expected or deserved when the contract was completed due to the fact that Mission had not kept record of each nurse's years of experience. HCA refused to promise increases based on years of experience without that information provided. Afterwards, the union worked tirelessly to get all nurses to submit their years of experience. Since then, we have repeatedly asked management to consider increased raises based on the information we provided them. We requested bringing all of the nurses employed at Mission prior to the contract up to the wage grids that Mission uses when hiring new nurses. We've also asked them to consider retention bonuses to stop this mass exodus of nurses. We continuously face complete refusal of these requests. As we all know, the easiest way to improve staffing and retain employees is to show them through fair compensation that they are valued and appreciated. You probably know that HCA is the highest profiting healthcare system in the country. You may not be aware that Mission Hospital is also the very highest profiting hospital for HCA. When HCA continuously denies increasing employees' pay in order to benefit their stakeholders' profits, it sends a clear message. This has led to hundreds of nurses leaving Mission Hospital. We have lost so many experienced nurses who spent all or most of their careers at Mission and would have stayed if it were not for the lack of consideration that is blatantly shown to us. Along with poor staffing of nurses, we're experiencing an extreme shortage of environmental services staff. A dirty hospital is not only unsafe as it increases infection to patients and staff, it is also quite embarrassing and demoralizing. Nurses are often expected to clean their patients' rooms and empty their trash. Considering the staffing problem, these nurses don't have time to do this. They don't have time to perform their normal duties, much less pick up extra duties. Another way we have been completely failed is the lack of phlebotomy staff. Sometimes there are five or less phlebotomists in the whole hospital when there are supposed to be 16. It is extremely dangerous taking care of patients with unknown lab results. Our providers aren't able to correct treatment, order correct treatments or medications or diagnose critical conditions. Nurses are then expected to draw patients' blood and get it to the lab quickly, another task they do not have time to perform. And these can literally be life and death situations. Although we cannot seem to be adequately staffed with phlebotomists, HCA continues to subcontract our phlebotomists out to skilled nursing facilities in order to bill them, adding to their profits. The staffing at the cafeteria has become abysmal. A poorly staffed cafeteria during the day and a closed cafeteria at night is unacceptable. The hospital's solution is to have food trucks present in the evenings, whenever the trucks are willing to be there. Mission Hospital in Asheville is the largest employer in the city, as well as the county. They have by far the largest profit margins. It doesn't add up that they use the excuse that there is a nursing shortage and an overall worker shortage that prevents them from keeping this establishment adequately staffed. The spokesperson for the hospital continuously tells the press the claims made by the staff and community are quote-unquote "meritless." And Mission Health selected HCA Healthcare because they, quote, "offered the financial stability to help preserve and expand high-quality care," unquote. We are fighting daily to get HCA to help us provide that high-quality care they boast about. We do not believe we are asking for the impossible. We believe HCA could do the right thing and show the staff and the entire community what they care about and the health and well-being of all of us. We just want them to, we just want to see them truly put patients over profits. Thank you.
All right, Lori.
And I do have quite a few coworkers here with me. So if there are questions, I, I can try to answer them. And I also have some help with a few that are willing to speak as well.
All right, Lori, thank you so much for coming. Appreciate all of you being here this evening and for the work that you do in the community. A big part of Buncombe County's mission as local government is focused on public health. And we know that's the mission that y'all are focused on as well. So thank you for the work that you do every day. And thanks for the courage you have all had over the last couple of years to serve the community and to stand up for yourselves and to stand up for, for our community. So thanks for being here. Commissioners, are there any questions?
I don't have any specific questions, but I also want to say thank you very much for being here and sharing this information with us. And more importantly, thank you for what you do for our community every day.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Parker.
One specific question, but yeah, I just first want to say again, thank you for what you do. Your union, not only nurses, but your union specifically, is a line of defense against HCA and what they do and what, primarily what they're not doing for our community and the people of Buncombe County, our constituents. So thank you for that. Thank you for what you're doing. I have a specific question, just so I understand it, so I can digest it and take it home with me. You said, I think, you've lost 400 nurses since this time last year. And I just want to make sure you didn't mean from two years ago. You meant last year.
Last year. There are a lot more than 400 nurses that we have lost. That's how many we've lost in this past year, correct? At least double that in the past two years. Most of the nurses that are there now are travelers and people that I don't know. It used to be that I knew just about everyone because, again, I go to all the different units.
Thank you. Lori, I guess the only other question I had, you know, is whether, you know, y'all are doing the work you're doing as workers at Mission Hospital. And a lot of people really appreciate it. Is there, is there anything else, though, that you can share with the community about other ways that the community can be supportive of helping to address a lot of the concerns around patient care that the nurses have elevated? I think that's a question a lot of us have kind of wrestled with. And we, you know, we try to do what we can do. But is there anything that you would share with the community around?
You know, we get that question a lot. And sometimes it's a hard question to answer because we could say, "Stop coming to Mission Hospital for your treatment." But then, that doesn't really feel like the right answer. That is happening. Any, anybody else kind of have anything to? Sorry. So we're talking about the action? Yes, okay. There is an action on August 25th at 8:00 a.m. And this is specifically for the nurses to express their disdain about the lack of wage increases, retention bonuses. They're offering all kinds of bonuses to new hires that they refuse to offer to those of us who have been there. So... Yeah, yeah. Oh, yes, they are offering very lucrative bonuses to management. The money's there. We know the money's there.
And you can really only hear someone at the podium, but, but you can, if you just, if anything you want to be heard, just repeat it.
Yes, so, so the $30,000 bonuses is to nurses? Oh, okay, to the travel, to the travelers that, they're trying to get the travelers to stay permanently, so offering $30,000 bonuses.
Correct.
And they're already paid much more than, than we are.
Let me ask a question.
Yes, sir.
The travelers, are they members of the union?
No, no, they are not allowed to be members of the union. They've also hired a lot of LPNs recently. And LPNs also cannot be member, members of National Nurses United. It's, it's for registered nurses only. Dare, dare I say, they're trying to hire more LPNs to dilute the union membership.
You know, I too want to thank you for, and all of you, for stepping up and coming forward. Because, you know, as a member of the community, it's so, it's a downer for me because I spent 12 years on the foundation board for Mission Hospital. And if you'd told me then we'd be where we are today, I would have never believed it.
I don't think any of us had any idea that it was going to become what it is.
All right, thank, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I also want to echo my thanks to each of you as well. I think being a nurse is a true calling. And for you all to still be in nursing despite your day-to-day situations shows a true testament to how much you care about your chosen profession. And I thank you all for that. As a mother who had a child who was sent immediately to the NICU after he was born, I was so grateful to have a hospital like Mission and attached with such incredible cardiology care for the first few years of his life. And it's, it's a really side state when we hear that folks are choosing to go elsewhere for their care. But thank you all for what you do on a daily basis, not just for Asheville and Buncombe County, but for Western North Carolina.
And I will say one more thing. Those of us that are here today, we're still at Mission because of the union. We, we refuse to stop fighting. Thank you very much.
All right, Susan, yeah, but could you come up to the mic? And then you'll get the, you'll get the last word on this for the evening. Thanks.
Not only have we lost, you know, hundreds of nurses, but we've also lost hundreds of our physicians that have been practicing in this area for as long as I've been at Mission, 17 years and longer. Most of the doctors now that are, are practicing in our emergency room in this hospital is, are under a private equity firm company. They don't, you know, I mean, I, I believe they care about our patients, but it wasn't like the established physicians that we had for the many, many years here in Mission, at Mission. I just wanted to point that out, too.
All right, thank you, Susan. Thank you all. Thanks for being with us this evening. And I hope you all appreciate that. A lot, a lot of people in Western North Carolina really believe what you're doing is making a really important difference for our region and our people. So thank you all. Thanks for being here. All right, Commissioners, next item on our agenda. And you're welcome to stay with us, but do not feel at all bad about if you like to depart as well. That's totally fine. All right, Commissioners, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing regarding a Community Development Block Grant for Neighborhood Revitalization. And Matt Cable and friends are here to discuss this item.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to bring forward this item this evening. I will be handing off the presentation and its responsibilities to Nancy Williams, but wanted to take the opportunity to briefly introduce her. Nancy Williams is our new Community Development Program Manager. So we had the expansion of staff, which the board approved late last calendar year. And we've been able to fill a number of those positions. And Nancy is one of the new staff members. She's been with us since January and is primarily responsible for external grant funding, both that which we receive and those which we hope to receive. So she has a relevant CDBG background and will be taking the lead on this project and preparing the application. So with that, I will turn it over to Nancy.
Thanks, Matt. Good evening, Commissioners. Pleasure to meet all of you and in person. So thank you. So, yeah, and just one correction. I came the end of June, not January, so it's been about a month. So I'm still getting acclimated, so just to let you know. All right, so the Community Development Block Grant NR, CDBG NR, is for Neighborhood Revitalization. And these funds are passed through the state and then awarded out across our 100 counties for, from the funds from HUD. So these will be administered, the application and the process, through the Rural Economic Development Division with the Department of Commerce. So this year, they are allocating $20,800,000 to be available across North Carolina. This is what we're looking to apply for. They have set the maximum award amount this year at 950, which is about 200,000 more per award, and there's no minimum. Most people last year did apply for the full amount. We're considering if that's... We're considering if that's going to be a really good approach to this and trying to get back into the CDBG funds. It's a 30-month project period. So, you have four months to kind of get the project up and running, get the RFPs out. There's 24 months to actually do the work, and then two months to wrap up and do the project closure. We are eligible for this because we are non-entitlement, which means that we are not getting other funds from HUD through CDBG funds, whereas the City of Asheville is an entitlement community. And so, all of our work, because they get the CDBG funds, will be outside of the City of Asheville. So, all of Buncombe County except for inside the City of Asheville. It is a very competitive application. Last year, 21 awards were made out of 100 counties, and five of those were counties, and 16 were for small-town municipalities. So, we received the NOFA on, I got it actually, August 2nd, and then it's due September 30th. So, we're in a really tight timeframe, and we're really pleased that we can get our two public hearings in. So, this is the first of two for this application process. All right, so now I'll go into what the funds can cover and the kind of their basis and their principles and the objectives. So, the national objectives are set by HUD that this benefits low and moderate-income persons. And it can be by area or individuals, and it's also to prevent or eliminate slums or blight, which is often if you have a redevelopment plan or something that sets up a particular area is where that would come in. And so, the idea is that this is promoting equitable and affordable housing, as well as maintaining it, supporting the existing communities, and really honoring their value and what they have and valuing the neighborhoods where our residents live. Oops. You went there. Okay, so, let me make sure I've covered this. All right, so eligible activities, including housing rehab. And this can be emergency repair all the way up to much larger rehabilitation or even replacement. So, it can be from the minor, keeping somebody in a home, emergency repairs, getting a heating system, or actually doing much more substantial work. Then there's scattered site housing, which is going to be more of that redevelopment area-type approach. We're not necessarily going to be able to utilize all of these different eligible activities, but I am listing them all so that you can see what's incorporated into this. All right, so the housing development is supporting infrastructure for housing. So, it could be either for single-family homeownership or for multifamily. And they have limits on the amount, whether it's for a home or for a rental unit. And then there's community revitalization. So, this would be also in the area of infrastructure, but it can also be public improvements, playgrounds, greenways, as well as flood and drainage improvements, which we've seen after Hurricane Fred was quite impactful and often needed. And then there are the public facilities. So, anything that the local government takes care of or improvement, whether it's shelters or recreational facilities, those are also eligible. And then water and sewer connections to existing housing. So, those are the six areas that the funding covers. And then this is in kind of more the details of what the requirements are. So, talking about the low and moderate-income persons, those are for anybody under 80% of the area median income. So, low is actually at 50%, but the moderate is at 80%. So, those are who we will be able to benefit with these funds. And the area-wide benefit, if that's considered, let's say in a redevelopment plan or a neighborhood improvement, then of that area, 51% needs to be low-income or lower-moderate-income persons. And so, this is federal funding. So, the federal requirements pass through, so the HUD regulations will go through, as well as following all the federal regulations. So, whoever is funded as a subrecipient also has to be understanding community development block grant fundings and those requirements. And we certainly have partners in Buncombe County who are very familiar with that, which is very helpful. So, the administrative costs are limited to 10% of the award. One of the benefits on this one is that matching funds are not required. But we're very proud of what Buncombe County is doing for affordable housing and development. So, I think just the county's commitments will be a huge benefit for this application. Keep hitting the wrong button. All right. So, our schedule is, like I said, the NOFA came out August 1st. We've got our first public hearing this evening. We will have the second public hearing on the actual application on September 20th. And then the application goes out the door and is back in Raleigh by September 30th. The award notification, we've listed November here. That might be a little ahead of schedule. Last year, it was December 16th when they actually had the press release and awarded the funds. So, we're looking at implementing, if we were to receive the funds, early 2023. And so, for this evening, we are looking at the approval of the Community Development Block Grant Citizen Participation Plan, which is required for HUD and CDBG programs. This will require the Board's approval. And this goes over all of the mechanisms of how our public are involved in our grant-making, funding. So, the public hearings that we have, the individual comments, complaints, or inquiries, all of those are welcome. And if it was in a situation where we had a neighborhood or an area being impacted, then there could be an advisory committee. And that would be another form if that was something that we were actually addressing and looking to do with the funds. So, the Citizen Participation Plan will describe how the information is distributed and maintained for the public. And so, our request tonight is adoption of the resolution for approving the updated CDBG Neighborhood Revitalization Citizen Participation Plan, which you also did last year when we had applied for this, and then hold the public hearing. Any questions?
Don't think there are any right now. All right, thanks, Nancy.
Thank you.
Commissioners, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, so we now need to open the public hearing. So, I'll do that at 6:12 p.m. And we should ask if there's any members of the public who wish to comment during the hearing. And I don't think we have any, so I'm going to close the public hearing at 6:13 p.m. And is there anything else we need to accomplish on this item this evening? All right, Matt, Nancy, thanks so much. We appreciate it. Look forward to learning more as the process moves forward. Okay. All right, we now come to the county managers' reports. So, I will turn it over to Avril Pender.
Commissioners, I'm giving a nod to DK, and she's going to introduce our new American Corps Fellow, Mylan, and is going to make her way to the podium. This young man has been with us now for two weeks. He started on August 1st and has already made an impact in the organization. So, I'll let DK talk a little bit about Mylan.
Thank you, Avril. Good evening, Commissioners. DK Wesley, your Assistant County Manager. I just want to briefly describe the program that Mylan is working with us through. You may have heard of LEAD for North Carolina, which is a state affiliate for LEAD for America. And the goals of this program is to do a couple of things. They want to grow our public leaders in North Carolina, to enhance our communities and local jurisdictions, and to have our new leaders work on very transformative projects in our organization. And so, Mylan is going to provide a little information about what he'll be working on. Mylan will be with us for about a year, so we're really excited to have him here, and I'll turn it over to Mylan.
All right, thanks, DK. Welcome, Mylan.
Thank you. Thanks, DK, Avril, Chairman Newman, the rest of the Commissioners, and the rest of the team at the county. I'm very, very appreciative and blessed to be here, working in Buncombe County. I'm originally from Charlotte, but just graduated from the University of Chicago, and I'm down here for a year alongside my other fellows, about 24 of us working throughout the state, working to impact communities. And I'm blessed to be here in Buncombe County. The three sort of main broad goals I'm going to be working on are racial equity, county-wide apprenticeships, and homelessness solutions. So, I really do look forward to working with you as Commissioners and other elected officials throughout Asheville and Buncombe County and, you know, the community to get this work done and hopefully make an impact. So, again, thank you so much for having me. I'm looking forward to meeting with and working with you all very, very soon. Thanks.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you as well. Those are issues that, as you know, are all really important issues to our community. So, we appreciate your willingness to work with us on those, and we look forward to talking with you further about these efforts. All right, thank you. Avril, any other items? Okay, great. Okay, we come to new business, and we've got a couple of budget amendments. The first is a budget amendment on LOB's 2022A slash 2022B and refunding of 2014A. So, John, tell us more about this amendment.
So, these are limited obligation bonds for 2022A and B and refunding of 2014A. These five ordinances establish the budget for the debt service payments on limited obligation bonds issued by the county at the end of June. There's also some refunding of the 2014A in four of these funds. General fund issuance is associated with the capital projects of fiscal year '22 solar. And the general services and fleet complex establishes budget of $821,915. The issuance also establishes debt payment budgets in the school capital fund of $2,756,234 and the solid waste enterprise fund of $2,822,202 for cell seven expansion. Lower interest rates reduce the budget for debt in the PDF Woodfin Fund by $68,344 and in the AB Tech Fund by $646,099.
Commissioners, are there any questions, or is there a motion on the budget amendment?
Motion to approve the budget amendment.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, and the second is a budget amendment for the DWI Task Force Grant FY 2023.
So, the Sheriff's Department has been awarded a DWI Task Force Grant for fiscal year '23 to pay three deputy salaries and associate operating costs. This award requires a 30% match from the Sheriff's Department. This budget amendment requires two ordinances, one to transfer the sheriff's match from the general fund to the grants fund, and another to accept this transfer and the award in the grants fund for a total of $269,210.
Is there a motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thanks, John. All right, the next item on the agenda is consideration of a resolution establishing a general obligation bonds community oversight committee. And I'll tee this off, but I welcome other Commissioners to feel free to chime in on this. So, as we've discussed at previous meetings, the voters are going to be considering two general obligation bonds on the ballot this fall, in November, which, if approved, would appropriate $40 million for investments in affordable housing. And the other is for consideration of a $30 million bond, which is focused on conservation and trail and greenway projects in the county. So, the proposal is for the creation of a community oversight committee, which would be responsible for reviewing all the investments made from both of the bonds, if they're both approved, or either of the bonds, if either of them are approved, in order, as part of an overall process, to assure transparency and accountability for investment of these taxpayer dollars. I'd like to just read, read parts of the resolution. It's not that long, so let me just read it so that we'll have that in the record. Whereas, the Board held two public hearings on June 7th, 2022, and issued a bond order for $40 million general obligation housing bonds and a bond order for $30 million open space bonds. Whereas, if approved by voters, had a special bond referendum to be held in Buncombe County on November 8th, 2022, it's the intention and responsibility of this Board to invest such funds in accordance with the law and for the purposes indicated on the ballots. Whereas, in order to instill confidence in the community through transparency measures, the county is currently planning to create an easy-to-access page on the county's website to track and demonstrate how bond funds are allocated. And whereas, to further transparency efforts and based on community feedback and to assure public trust in the uses of such funds, the Board deems it desirable and in the best interest of the citizens and residents of the county to create a community oversight committee to monitor the investments in low- and moderate-income housing and open space conservation if the voters approve the referendums this November. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe as follows. One, that a general obligation bonds community oversight committee is hereby created. Two, that the committee shall have five members comprised of one person with an accounting background, one person with a banking background, one representative of the affordable housing community, one representative from the conservation green waste community, each to be appointed by this Board, and one member to be appointed by the Asheville Chamber of Commerce. Three, that the committee members will serve until all bond funds have been committed. Any member who is unable or unwilling to serve will be replaced by the appropriate appointing authority for the remainder of the term. Four, that the purpose of the committee is to review the investments made from the bond revenues to confirm that 100% of bond funds are invested in accordance with law and for the purposes indicated on the ballots. Five, the committee will adopt a set of bylaws to include the appointment of a chair and vice chair from among its members, meetings process, a public comment period at each meeting, and procedures for committees' action. The committee will meet no less than two times per year and will make an annual report to this Board. Six, the committee will be an advisory committee to this Board and will comply with open meeting laws. As such, the committee will not make any recommendations for any particular projects. Seven, the committee will serve and act separate and apart from the county's external auditor in its statutory function in conducting the annual independent audit of county financial audits. Eight, that this resolution shall be effective upon approval either of both of the special bond referendums. All right, appreciate the staff drafting the resolution after this idea sort of has come forward for consideration. So, Commissioners, any questions or comments about the proposed creation of the Oversight Committee?
Yes, I, well, go ahead, Terry.
You go ahead.
Going back to number three. Will be willing to serve, now this, if it is passed in November, it is for 20 years, correct? How long a term will the committee have?
So, the funds must all be expended over a shorter period of time, though. So, the maximum period, does anybody remember?
Seven.
So, I think the intention is to invest all the funds within seven years. There is a potential it could be longer, but not expected to be needed.
So, they would stay on the whole seven years?
Well, I think as it's drafted, they could, so the same people could serve. But we do recognize that's a period of time. There might be a person who, you know, moves to another community or something like that. So, if a person does move, there'd be a process to replace that particular person.
And it does state in four, to confirm 100% of bond funds are invested in accordance. And I was thinking also, it's, so it's till the point that they're invested, which could even, in theory, be less than seven years. Yeah.
Yes, that would be, yeah, the maximum, really.
So, yeah, I appreciate staff drafting this. I'm supportive. I think it's a great idea. We have, we have very strong programs, and we have really good advisory boards working on those programs and making those recommendations. So, I feel great about that, and I think this is just really an extra step that we want to show the community to really, that, that we have this citizen oversight board to ensure them that there is complete transparency and that they can feel confident that the funds are being spent in the way that they are stated and intended.
And over the years, we've had several bond issues in both the city and county. And one of the complaints has been transparency. And I think this helps there because we have the overall committee to really look at it. This is one of the areas where we can't have too many sets of eyes, I don't think, looking at it to keep everybody sort of informed, not sort of informed, on what's going on. But I think this is great because, you know, I've been around long enough. I've heard the same argument for years on the different bond issues we've had, and this will help, I think.
I wholeheartedly agree. I'm supportive of this, and I agree with Commissioner Wells. We have great committees that are working on these issues. I think having yet another layer and a different set of eyes reviewing this work is going to be very beneficial as we build the trust and the transparency around these bond issues should they pass in November. So, I'm incredibly supportive of this.
All right. Is there a motion regarding the resolution?
Motion to, sorry, Commissioner Wells, motion to, to approve the resolution to create or establish a general obligation bond community oversight committee.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Very good. All right. We, we have a couple of board appointments to look at. The first is on the Mount Area Workforce Development Advisory Board.
I move to approve Anna Davis.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. And the Early Childhood Education and Development Committee.
I move that we appoint Carol Stein and Marcia Davis.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Is there a need for a closed session?
Chairman Newman, if I may interrupt real quickly.
That's fine. Yeah, sure.
Just want to give you an update on a board that we have a vacancy in. The planning board, I think we discussed it probably two meetings ago, and we didn't have a whole lot of application activity. Right now, we have up that activity. We do have five potential applicants that have applied for the planning board vacancy. Wanted to see if the board was interested in doing interviews anytime soon.
I think we'll definitely want to do interviews. And I'm sorry, did you say the, the application's still open at this time?
It currently is open. I think it ends next week, but currently, we have five applicants. At the time, I think that I introduced it and I asked the commissioners to kind of see if they could drum up some interest. We only had one applicant at the time.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, sorry. I was just going to mention that, I believe, we're going to be handing the comprehensive plan off to this board for their final review in November. So, perhaps trying to get someone in short order or after that time would be appropriate.
September 6th. Yep. We could, do we want to interview all the applicants? That's, I mean, we could say, like, on September 6th, we're going to interview the applicants and then make a decision on September 6th. We could announce tonight. I'm sorry, Lamar, how long did you say the window's already open for, to apply?
I'm pretty sure the application closes next week.
Okay. So, anybody who's interested, now's your chance. Throw your hat in the ring. Y'all want to just plan on interviewing whoever has applied by that date, and we'll have this, we'll have this on the agenda for our next meeting.
Is, is there a specific time that y'all would like to start? I know you all have different committee meetings and things.
Do. I know we have affordable housing that day at 1:00.
No, we don't have a lot.
I'm sorry. You, you do have it at what time?
1:00.
Okay. And that, and what time do y'all get done?
2:30.
2:30. Okay. Well, we could do it prior to each of our meetings, and we could just give ourselves 10 minutes for each application. If we get a whole bunch of new ones, that may not work, but if it's not many more than we have now, if we started at, like, 11:30, we could do them prior to our meetings. That would be one option. Another option would be to do them after our meetings, but that would cut into our briefing meeting, so we'd have to keep the agenda for that meeting short. In fact, there really wouldn't be much time for it at all. So, maybe we need to look at doing it before.
I'm not available before. I haven't.
You're not available before.
I cannot change. I'm sorry.
We could do a special meeting to just do the interviews between now and then. That would be an option. We don't, the other option would be to make the appointments on September 20th. We don't have affordable housing that day. I don't think y'all have early childhood. So, we could, we could plan on doing the interviews, like, around 1 o'clock on the 20th, and then make the appointments that evening. Let's plan on that. Does that sound workable? Okay. There's a comp plan meeting that day? Yep. All right. Let's, let's, let's plan on trying to make, somehow, let's try to make the decisions on September 20th. Let's just figure out the right time to do some interviews, if we can. Obviously, we need, we need to do the interviews. So, let's work towards that and explore some options for dates. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Lamar. All right. Mr. Frew?
For, we have, need a motion to go in closed session pursuant to 143-318-11A3. That's for attorney-client communication. One, to discuss a claim and potential settlement authority with the board. And the second is to discuss the Marcus Hyde and Ashley Barrett case versus the Office of the Sheriff, which is in United States District Court, Western District of North Carolina, 19CV250. And we need to ask for some direction from the board.
Great. Is there a motion to go in a closed session, to go in a closed session?
So moved.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. When we're done with the closed session, we don't expect to take any additional action. We'll simply adjourn the meeting.